I'll call the media, the workshop to order at four oh three.
Okay, you want, so, uh, Don, is it okay if we start with, uh, Don Jamison, is it okay if we start with Don Nichols? Kind of, uh, giving us an overview of the facilities and maintenance budget?
Yeah, no, I think that would be great.
Okay, so I've shared that for you, um, Cheryl Fornier, if you want to, um, see if what you can bring up as some background material to, for Don Nichols.
You're waiting for me? Well, good evening, every, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'd like to start with my CIP, um, and go through that with you first. Um, one of the things being new here, um, it took me a little, little while to kind of get caught up to speed. And looking back at several years of the CIP, um, I did notice a trend, uh, about two years ago, and it's a trend that I'd like to continue with. Um, if you look at the bottom of the page where it says vehicles, um, we had started doing some vehicle replacement. Um, we still have several pieces of equipment that, that need to be replaced. So if you look at that line in particular, that's why that line is, uh, pretty heavy. Um, one of the things that I was able to do was sit down with Cheryl. Um, we have a box truck that, uh, needs to be replaced, that I'm afraid it's not going to pass inspection. It was a, uh, box truck with a lift gate that, um, I believe Food Service had, that was given to us. Um, it's a very important piece of equipment. So, uh, Cheryl and I, uh, looking, um, looking to see if we might be able to use funds from this year to, to purchase that and to help me, uh, flatten out the line a little bit. For next year. Um, I also have a pickup truck and a plowing sander that I'd like to replace next year. Uh, it's a two thousand seven, uh, the body's rotten out on it, has some soft spots in the frame. So I'm looking at, you know, replacing that. If you look, you can see, you know, over, over the course of the next several years, that's where a lot of my, uh, a lot of my costs are going to be. Um, I also looked at, you know, roof systems, um, exterior walls, HVAC, um, just kind of got an overview of the direction that we were going in, or the school department was going in, and, uh, put money in according to, you know, keeping the buildings, the upkeep in buildings and continue improving in them. So, um, don't know if anybody has any questions?
You're talking, uh, questions about vehicles, Don?
Yep, questions about vehicles, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any questions on the vehicle line?
I guess the only thing I'd ask with the vehicles is if there's any, uh, coordination with the city at all.
Um, what I did was, um, like with the box truck, when I started getting, uh, quotes for that, you know, we were able to get like the city pricing from the dealerships, you know, Sanford, Sanford's price. Are, are you talking about going in like, uh, buying with them?
Yeah, yeah, stuff like that, so.
Stuff like that.
Is there anything also talking about maybe the option of lease payments?
Uh, that was something that Cheryl and I, uh, spoke about briefly. Um, we do currently have two, two vehicles that we do have lease payments on. Um, we have a new GMC pickup that was, uh, purchased with a lease and a, uh, John Deere tractor with a bucket, has, have lease payments.
Matt, what's the, what's the, um, authority for us getting a loan if you don't have the cash reserve? Um, I mean, a lease, you could, because the interest rates are so cheap, I'm sure the local bank would give you a hell of a loan for five years or something, which is probably better than a lease, just curious.
Yeah, uh, good question. I'm not sure we'd have to be able to, uh, check into that. We haven't done that yet. Uh, part of what we, when I throw out a lease, uh, or in, in a case of a loan, what you're trying to do is keep, and Don's done a pretty good job here, when you look at his CIP at the bottom line, but what you try to do is level off those payments so that you know what you can be expecting year after year and just do it, what Don's come into is put on a, a system here, kind of like a, uh, uh, a cycle, a, a schedule, uh, to be able to come back and, and be able to maintain a level that doesn't hit you.
No, I, I, I understand, I understand that. What I'm, what I'm saying is, you're trading in a, replacing a two thousand seven, obviously you got thirteen years out of it, so a lease really is, you, I'm, I'm, at least to me, is you're turning it back in, isn't it?
Well, so we have the option of lease purchasing, which is a terminology that we use in the municipality slash school side. Which is, end up with it at the end.
That's Greek to the, that's Greek to the rest of us, so.
Especially a loan, and you just, they call it a lease purchase.
Well, call it a loan for our sake, would you?
Yeah.
So, so, I, I, then if it's a loan, it's a low interest rate, that's probably the right thing to do. So I, I follow you, Don, I didn't mean to confuse you, but, uh, just more school terminology.
I, I guess I will ask a question, Don, just because you're, we're talking about the vehicles. And knowing, you know, about the, the properties that the depo, the school department, like, owns or who, you know, I don't know how to word it, but with like plowing. And I know that, I don't, I don't know what we pay the city and outsourcing of that to be plowed. Has there ever been conversations for the school department to own their own plow, to do it ourselves?
Well, I, I'll just give you a real quick history. Um, the way the, the plowing contractors, I have three outside vendors that plow, um, the district for me, and the way the contract reads is anything over two inches, so, um, anything less than two inches of, of snow, um, and salting, we're usually responsible for, so. Um, and with the way the schools are set up, with some of them, they're, they're challenging, uh, with islands and, like poles and, you know, wooden guardrails, so, um, I don't quite have the manpower to take it on all the plowing myself, so that's why we, we subcontract the majority of it out.
I get it. Thank you.
And I think also, uh, one thing we do is we do work closely with the city. Um, Matt Hill, uh, from the city and Public Works will, uh, call a meeting together, uh, with the contractors, and they also, on their end, Amy, have to subcontract a lot too. So it's one of those things where I think, as Don said, um, in addition to equipment, it's also a staffing and a resources issue as well, um, on top of that.
Hey, so this, uh, I guess, uh, kind of bubble of vehicles, is that from us pushing it off for a number of years and just kind of getting by with what we had and making it stretch?
Um, yeah, I'd have to say that, yes.
I know that's kind of been the, uh, the, your, uh, previous, uh, regime in maintenance, that was kind of their, their go-to move, so.
Yeah, I have some, uh, uh, like the individual schools have, uh, ride-on tractors with snow blower attachments on the front. Um, some of them are ten, twelve years old, and when they were purchased, they're basically a residential mower. And we're trying to use it as a commercial one, so, um, a lot of our snow, a lot of our tractors with the blower attachments and, and, uh, mowing decks, um, they've been used quite a bit, and they're getting tired.
Gotcha. And I think one of the things that we're going to want to do, and, and Don's, uh, understanding it, is trying to make sure that we can do, uh, keep away with these spikes or these, uh, Matt, increases and decreases. A lot of it is trying to keep it, uh, doing your best to keep it level, but it's a schedule for that replacement that helps those come up rather than having to come back all at one time, where that kind of comes back and hits us. Uh, and then that way, uh, it can be better, better planning. And that way, we, uh, can also see it both short-term and what the plan is long-term for that. Okay, do we, what do you want to go next, Don?
Um, we could start with the regular budget if nobody has any, um, questions on the CIP.
Do you want to go back to the CIP?
Uh, the regular, the regular budget?
No, let's, let's, I think the CIP was up there pretty quick, so I just want to be able to make sure people have time to look that over, uh, with that.
So, um, mostly, I, uh, like roof systems, uh, the majority of our roofs have, you know, been replaced already. Uh, so it was just a lot of preventive maintenance work on those. Um, the roof here at the maintenance building is slated in year twenty-two, twenty-three for replacement. So you can see that cost, um, for there. Um, exterior walls and foundations, um, a lot of it's masonry work to the buildings, um, like at the middle school. Uh, we had a lot of, uh, concrete, um, pads, outside of doors that are deteriorating, that need to be replaced. Um, I also have some, uh, some work on walls, uh, masonry walls that need to be done that wasn't included in the, uh, included in the project there. So that's why you see for two years, I, I, um, have that. Um, I have some, uh, over at Margaret Chase Smith, we have some doors, um, a couple exterior doors that need to be replaced, that didn't get replaced. Um, the converted elementary or the old middle, junior high school, um, I have some, uh, masonry and a couple, uh, exterior doors over there that weren't included in the project. Um, if you looked at, at exterior walls, um, HVAC, um, basically a lot of that is preventive maintenance. Um, I have included some up, upgrades for Carl J. Lamb in year twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, there have to do with, uh, a lot of the drives and the motors for the HVAC over there. Um, maintenance building, uh, currently, we have, I need to do some work out in our storage room. We have no heat out there where we keep all our supplies. I have a small, little space heater out there that tries to, um, keep that space from freezing. Uh, it's something that was put in the, the CIP for a couple of years, but kept, uh, getting cut out. But that room really needs some heat in there, and we can, uh, I've talked with the, our plumber, and then it's easy enough to do, so I'd like to take care of that. Um, I pushed that out to twenty-three, twenty-four, but I'd like to, like to take care of that. Um, electrical. Uh, Carl J. Lamb, I'd like to start doing some lighting upgrades. As, as we all know, Carl J. Lamb is one of our older buildings. So, you know, I, I'd like to start investing, slowly investing some money in Carl J. Lamb. I'd like to do some lighting upgrades, um, that, that'll be a beneficial, that'll be a, a nice payback for us in savings. Uh, plumbing, I basically kept some money, I saw a trend over the last several years, um, just putting some money in the CIP just that, so that we have it there, so we start doing some, uh, plumbing upgrades and that there's money there to be able to do that. So, that's plumbing. Um, interior trim. Um, they would, basically a lot of this is preventive maintenance, but also, uh, there's a lot of, um, like fire panel needs some, some work, like at Carl J. Lamb. Uh, also, we need, uh, if you look, mostly fire alarm panel upgrades and, and maintenance on in, on the interior trim. Uh, fire and safety, again, uh, Carl J. Lamb, that's, that's a big one that I want to start investing some money in fire and safety in our older building, just so that we meet, meet compliance.
Don, when you say fire and safety, what do you mean by fire and safety?
Uh, fire and safety, like, uh, suppression system, gonna need, need some upgrading, Matt. Um, over the next several years. Uh, fire panel that, uh, also is going to need some attention, some upgrading to meet current codes, and then the rest of it is, basically all the other buildings is preventive maintenance. Um, ADA. Um, again, Carl J. Lamb, that's gonna, I want to, next year, I want to start doing a lot of intruder, uh, intruder bubble locks on the classrooms, uh, upgrading to a security classroom lock, lock set for the doors for that. And then the rest of the, just basically preventive maintenance, if you, uh, look at that. Uh, site improvements for the schools. Um, a lot of, uh, like Margaret Chase, uh, Smith, a lot of paving that never, that wasn't included in the, um, original project over there, the loop that goes around the back of the building, and then there's some, uh, parking out in the front that, uh, wasn't finished paving, so like to do that. Um, there's some, uh, uh, let me look at my notes here. I also have some, uh, some, uh, paving that I'd like to do at the, uh, middle school. Uh, we have some, on the side of the building, if you can kind of orientate yourself to where the modulars used to be, um, across from my office, we have a couple, what we call courtyards there, and we have doors there that, um, are just dirt. Um, there was no paving or walkways made, you know, to those doors, um, included in the project. And the kids use those doors quite a bit, so, uh, springtime's going to be interesting with mud and snow. So I'd like to do some, next year, do some paving there. Um, landscaping, uh, like to do some, some landscaping at both the middle school and the, uh, converted elementary building, um, that wasn't included, um, in either one of those projects. And then that brings me back to the last page on vehicles.
So, Don, I got a question that's, um, kind of a bigger picture question.
Definitely.
Like Lafayette and Willard, I assume have nothing in there, uh, because we're anticipating potentially just turning them back over to the city. But what if, uh, our plans don't go that way? What kind of shape are those buildings in? So if we did retain them, you know, and this doesn't have to be exact, just off the top of your head, like, you know, are they going to need a lot of work in the next few years, or are there big issues that are potentially there, or?
Um, I would say Lafayette, one of the biggest issues we have there right now currently. Um, because I still maintain that because of the YMCA being there, but, uh, the heating system's going to need some upgrading over there if we, if we continue to, um, maintain that building. Uh, Willard and the gym. Um, depending on, again, depending on what we do with that, those buildings, a lot of it's just, um, I feel pretty comfortable saying that most of it's just upkeep, preventive maintenance, and Willard. Um, there, there could be some floor coverings that we may, uh, encounter, that may have some, uh, uh, asbestos under them in the future.
Oh, don't say asbestos around Matt.
Twitching, twitching, Don.
Uh, yeah, because we had done the roofs, like, not that long ago, right? Like, I'm talking within, like, ten years or something, right?
Yes, we did at, at Willard, um, we did. And so I, I think Don's right. I think if you look at those buildings, they're, they're, you know, there's going to have to be some upkeep there, and he did mention the heating system at Lafayette, but I do think we're, uh, those are well-positioned, better than you might say some other things that are going into. It's not like they've been neglected or things are, are going in that's going to have to have a lot of work.
Yeah, just figured while we had Don here, it'd be a worthwhile thing just to ask.
Yep.
All right, Don, you want to transition over into your budget?
Sure. Um, if everyone could turn to, I'd like to start on page twenty-three of the budget.
I'd also like to remind people that, um, when you look at the bottom line on this grouping, that it says he went up five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, but four, four hundred and thirty thousand is that new debt that we had, the principal of the new debt. Um, so I just wanted to remind people that.
Oh, she make Don handle all that?
Yeah, we put it to Don, right.
He gets it all.
I get everything.
He's the new guy, so that's, uh, that's what he gets.
Uh, so I, I'm not sure how you want to do the, the regular budget. I mean, I don't, we can go page by page if you want, or if you want to skim through it, if there's something that you want to ask me, you know, a question that I can give a more explanation on, or?
Well, I think we're trying, uh, right now, um, we're, we're on page twenty-three?
Yep.
Okay, so, and, um, a lot of this is fol- following on the nuts and bolts of Don's budget as, and, as opposed to personnel, trying to remove those from being on the screen here. So.
So again, you know, what I did with the regular budget was, um, I sat down with my administrative assistant, and I kind of went back five years, just to kind of look at some of the history and just, again, just to try to see what that trend was. Um, then I went back and, um, I looked at this bu, I looked at this budget about five times to see where I can make cuts. Um, and, and just to get a, a better understanding of, of some of the costs that we, that are in the budget. I'll be honest, uh, um, I'm really comfortable saying that this is a realistic budget, and it's a budget that I, uh, that I feel like can, can work with.
Hey Cheryl, what was the, uh, the increase when you took out the, the bond money?
A hundred and nineteen thousand.
Yeah. And that would include the, uh, salary increases for all the employees under Don, right?
And it also includes adjustments in the electricity, oil, propane, for all the schools, which has gone up. Um, and plus, we, um, we didn't know the amount that should be for the high school, now we have a better idea what it should be, and stuff like that, so, so that's where some of the costs went up.
And I'll jump in as well. One of the things that, uh, Don and Cheryl worked hard at was, um, you've got, you've got the facilities and maintenance budget, but we also have, um, the, uh, fe, some of the, uh, CRF funds, the Corona Relief Funds, and some of the bond funds. So what we tried to do was looking at what we had there, how can we leverage those funds? And how can we do our best to keep a budget, uh, maintain a budget that's going to kind of hit all of the different points that need to be hit in keeping that, um, relatively stable. And so that's where, th- those areas, by having the Corona Relief Funds in some areas, for some of the upgrades we were able to put in, and the bond issue with some of the, uh, the bonds that we have adding in, that's been helpful so that we can kind of better coordinate and keep that increase reasonable. Hey, go ahead, Don, anything else you want to share?
Um, oh, it, on top of those costs, uh, that Cheryl mentioned, you know, we, we took a pretty big hit with, uh, snow plowing this year in those contracts, those naturally went up. Um, just wanted to add that. Um, as you can see on page twenty-seven, you know, if you look at my, you know, uh, contracted services line, um, a lot of these, uh, costs, um, I carried over because a lot of them are costs that we need, you know, like elevator inspection, um, bleachers, uh, bleacher inspections, fire, fire inspections, sprinkler inspections, stuff like those, so.
And wasn't bleacher inspections not on there last year?
Uh, that was not on there last year, no.
And the other thing we did with, uh, the plowing, uh, contracts, those have been set, right? So we know what those amounts are, so that's easier to put in the budget as well. Um, with that is, uh, that includes, uh, so there's not going to be any guessing when it comes to that.
Right, and that's a three-year contract for those. We upped it from two years to three years. And one of them, they went up a fair amount, but then they, they're keeping it constant for those three years. So there won't be any increase, so, yeah, it was a big hit this year, but there won't be a hit next year or the year after.
Cheryl, was that the high school one? I'm not sure what page you're in right now, but.
Yeah, high school was one of the ones that got a hit, uh.
Yeah, but that high school one was ultra-low the first year. I think that was a mistake by the bidder.
Yeah, and, you know, MCS is the one that had the biggest increase because of all the new little bump outs and stuff from what I hear, takes extra time.
Bump outs are ridiculous when it comes to snow.
They are.
And.
Tell them to hit them really hard this year, Don.
Is this including the new, the new middle, the, the new elementary school as well, in this quote?
Yep. Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And a, as Jonathan mentioned, uh, especially at that high school, that, the, this is the, the, the contract that we have now was the second one. The first one, we were kind of, it was, there were a lot of unknown to it, and, and so now, after going through that, uh, better positioned and better served to understand exactly what, uh, what that entails.
Mm-hmm. Hey, so Don, I got kind of a, another big picture question for you.
Sure.
So with the new buildings coming on, and I know that the maintenance staff is pretty, uh, pretty slim and always has been. You know, do you think you're in a position where, you know, you need more staff to maintain these buildings? Or you're looking to outsource more stuff? I guess looking down the road a few years. You know, where do you think you are, and what do you think you need to make sure that we keep these nice new buildings nice?
Well, I, I currently have two maintenance, um, maintenance, uh, staff members. Um, I also put in this year, um, for the assistant director for the, up at the high school. I, I want to get those positions filled and that, um, and I see a long-range plan. Um, yes, we're probably going to need more maintenance staff to maintain what we have. Um, it's a, it's a very delicate balance sometimes with staff. You either have way too many or you don't have enough sometimes.
So I think, Don, one of the things that, um, uh, and I'm talking Don Jamison, I, uh, Don, uh, addressing Don, um, Jamison, is, uh, you know, Don came on at a very challenging time. He came on that in September, right in the middle of construction projects, right in the middle of COVID. And so we were looking to have, um, we were looking to, uh, have that assistant director position because that had resigned. And so as, uh, uh, Don Nichols came in and tried to prioritize, we were getting to a point where we're getting ready to move on that. But at the same time, I wanted to wait to see how we did for subsidy. And, uh, because we were worried, right, when we were talking about a ten percent possible cut and subsidy and other things going down. So, uh, with the idea that, um, and, and, for example, that assistant director position is in this budget. And so that's going to be something now we can go forward and fill because of seeing that we, i- in terms of what our subsidy was, I wanted to kind of hold that one out there, um, as an opportunity for it. The other position that we have is by closing Willard, um, school next year. We do have a custodian that is dedicated to Memorial Gym. And obviously, a lot of what Memorial Gym holds has been transitioned over to the high school and the technical center and the performing arts center. And so, um, the good plan would be, when Willard's closed, is to move that position dedicated there to the high school, I think, which will come in and help. Um, and we are looking at, uh, also, uh, possibly with the con, uh, converted elementary school, the school to be named later. That one is, um, does increase some of the space, and same with the middle school. So, uh, one of the things that's not in the budget that, um, is a potential add would be an additional custodian position to share between the converted elementary school and Sanford Middle School to help with some of that increased real estate that does need to be cleaned by the, by the footprints of those schools becoming larger.
Got you. I just, I kind of bring it up because I want to plant that seed, where I don't want to see us ten years from now at the point where these buildings have fallen into disrepair, because we haven't had the foresight to have the, the proper staffing for it. So, I know it's a tough discussion because, you know, we're trying to not lose any positions right now, but. hopefully, the next few years, it'll turn around for us.
Dawn, can I ask you a question? In regards to, like, the different schools, do playground equipment and all that, does that come out of your budget or the specific schools?
It depends. Like, up at, I just, while I was looking through budget and everything, and like up at Carl J. Lamb, I know like the PTO has some money that they're raising for some new playground equipment up there. So some of it does come out of my budget, and some of it is raised through other funds.
So Dawn, I think most of what comes out of the maintenance budget, and Cheryl, you can jump in here, might be more of the, what's it called, the shavings that?
Yeah, like bark, wood chips.
Wood chips and mulch and those types of things, as opposed to a new swing or a new slide. Those things traditionally don't fall into that budget. That, with that, those are things that sometimes, those bigger ticket items are something that we have to fall and have the assistance of a PTA or a legacy foundation or something.
Right, I think, I think they might fix it, you know, if you had a swing break, you know, just the bottom part, they'd go in and fix that and stuff like that. There is some money in there for that, but not for replacing a swing set, let's say.
Yeah, just, I'm privy to the Carl Lamb savings for that, for that one, just because that main set is as old as the school, so that's why I ask.
Yes, it is.
And I think one of the things too that Jerry Behrens brought up is also for that particular playground, we've got a pretty significant drainage issue that has to be addressed as well. And I see that more of coming under Dawn's purview and the maintenance to be able to take care of that pronto.
Yeah, that's good news.
Okay, Dawn, is there anything else that you want to highlight, that you want to share? We don't see any really major, you've talked about your approach, we don't see any major increases. You mentioned, there's a lot of those items, the elevator repairs and those inspections and whatnot that are almost carryovers that come into where we are. Cheryl's had a better idea to kind of look at some of our, some of our utility costs for that. I know working hard by trying to update these controls are also some things that are going to have some payoffs for us with that, so.
Yeah, one of the items that got added is that train to replace filters and radiator and units, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's for the high school, for the majority of that.
And that's right here on that page, right? Twenty-six thousand?
Yep.
Yeah, and so that's a cost in terms of, you know, that's something that we've realized after being in that building, that those filters do need probably a quicker replacement cycle than we were probably planning for originally. Would that be safe to say, Dawn?
Yes, usually the Department of Education likes to see them done every quarter. I'm finding that up at the high school, it's roughly about every three months that we're changing them.
Hey, speaking of the HVAC at the high school, is that, what's the situation with that being balanced? Is that finally all done? Do we have local control now? I don't, we've gotten like an update lately.
We do not, and I am, I am.
Was this a bad question, Matt?
Well, the timing of it is such because, as you can, as you know here, right, that we've had some cold weather here recently. And we get a system, we get it all balanced, and then all of a sudden, when it's cold again, it kicks out and it doesn't operate the way it's supposed to. So there's frustration all along and a lot of finger pointing that's going on between all the different groups that have a say in that. And so I'm pushing back pretty hard right now because I've never got to a place where we felt comfortable. We get things set, it works, people go away, it becomes cold again, and then it doesn't work. And so we're continuing to push back on that, and we're right in the middle of that because we just had, you know, the report I gave back at the beginning of January let us know that things were going pretty well. We were optimistic and feeling good about the adjustments that we made. And then just recently, we had that five-degree day, and sure enough, they are not operating when it's that cold to the level that they need to. And so we're still trying to balance those and try to determine and eliminate the finger pointing to see exactly what's going on.
Is this at the middle school or at the high school?
This is at the high school.
You're fighting a good fight, Matt, that's all I can say.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, you know, yeah, I'll stop. I mean, they were talking about maintenance contracts, and I'm pushing back to say, it's, when it's never worked consistently and confidently, then it's not a maintenance contract issue. It is a, a whole, right now, is it a design issue or is it something that way where, you know, we do have a system that it's going to be cold, and when it's cold is when we know that that needs to kick in and work.
Got you, Matt.
But does anybody else have any questions for me?
I have one more.
Sure.
So with the middle school, and I know I had asked that, but with, like, is the plan for this summer with the lockers and all of that, is that, what is the timeline for that getting, like, looked at, painted, pulled out, whatever decision is?
Well, I looked at them and they do need to be shanded down and cleaned and repainted. So it's on my, it's on my to-do list this summer. You're talking in the locker rooms, correct?
Yeah.
The locker rooms?
No.
No, these aren't, these aren't the locker room, Dawn. These are the ones actually out in the building.
Oh, out in the building, okay.
Yeah, and they're the orange, right? They're everyone's favorite color of orange. And so there's, and as I mentioned, Amy, the last time when you asked, we haven't moved forward with that yet right now. That hasn't been a priority for us to be able to look at. There are some concerns around that, that, one, what is the scope of that project? Is it something that can get done in a summer? Remember, we're also looking at learning, addressing learning loss for our students and summer school. So that's another thing that we have to be able to look into for summer programming. So it's kind of a complex issue. And then the other piece that's involved in there as well is depending on the level of work that we do and that we decide to do, there also may have to be some abatement, some asbestos abatement that has to go on there. And so it's complex that beyond just, hey, we want those out and gone, the question's going to be, what are our options? What are the different things that it costs? What are the timelines? And as I mentioned before, that's something that we, right now, we haven't been able to shift and put our focus to that right now with it. We had a situation today when I talked to Dawn. He was working hard because the converted elementary school, we've transitioned all of the utilities and the heating over to the contractor, and we had an issue there where they ran out of propane today, where they weren't expecting that. And so Dawn did a nice job of really problem-solving that and really jumping into action there that we could help that. So a lot of what I'm saying is we're focused on trying to get these things, the immediate stuff, and that's something that we've kind of put off. And I know it's tough because students and staff and the community want probably some, there's more of a sense of urgency there, so we're not trying to stall, but there are some challenges that are making that difficult to really focus on right now.
I think it's just helpful for people to hear, you don't mean to hear that just because I know my kids are like, when is the orange going to be gone? And so, like, sorry, Sadie, your eighth grade year, the orange will still be there. And Paige, you're in sixth grade, the orange might be, you know what I'm saying? I think just hoping maybe for next year, if not, you know what I mean? And trying to think between now and a year or two years, what can we do to make the school a little bit nicer and warm and pretty until?
Yeah, and if we have, if we have to do it in piecemeal, maybe we start with the eighth grade first, right? So that they at least have that opportunity to be able to see that. And then if we have to move back in terms of piecemealing and doing it at different times.
Pretty sure they've been saying that for fifty years, Matt, so don't feel like you're, you got time. I think we need to find out who actually decided on the orange to begin with and go back to them. The tiles were part of that too, right, Matt? Isn't that part of the whole overall project, just doing something?
Yeah, the peach tiles and the orange lockers, those are, those are on the docket to be able to be replaced. And one of the things I think we're going to have to do, and one thing that the school committee and the core building committee will be a part of, is I think we have to review options because there's going to be some choices and some things to make to see if that's something that we want to put over on top of, or do we want to replace? There's going to be different choices that we can come in that ultimately I think will all get us to what we want, is the removal of the orange and the peach. But as far as what extent and what that looks like, we've got to be, we've got some decisions to make.
It's on the to-do list. Did you have something, Paula? It looked like you were going to jump in now.
Agreeing and?
Just agreeing?
Nodding.
Home support? Hey, does anybody else have anything for Dawn? Anything at all? Well, I think Dawn's doing a great job considering his short term he's been here, so thank you, Dawn.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dawn.
Yeah, and thank you for saying that, Jonathan. I agree. It's a challenging situation to come into on any normally, right? And Dawn's experience coming in from some other areas in a fresh pair of eyes and looking at some things, I think has been helpful for us as we can be able to. A lot of this is trying to get away from a reactive piece to more of a proactive preventative shift. And as all of us know, that's not something that just happens overnight. That's the process. And so Dawn's been doing a really good job.
Thank you very much.
The other thing, Matt, is on education, we talk about students and curriculum, but, you know, the kitchen needs new ovens, Dawn needs new plow, all of that is part of providing a good education?
Yes. Okay, so we did, one of the questions that came out after last week, on Monday rather, when we shared kind of the staffing projections and enrollments, was there was some questions about numbers at the high school? Is that something that I can bring up now to help people walk them through? Because I have sent this to you, but I think it is something that needs some context for that.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea, Matt.
Do you want to start with the current semester we're in, or do you want to start with last year? What I've sent you and what I can bring up is four semesters worth. The one that just started on Monday, the second semester of this year. We also have this year's first semester that just ended, and then we also have the two semesters from last year. Any preference?
I'd say chronological order is probably a good way to go.
Going back from now backwards?
I'd say going backwards forward.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yep, so we'll go to first semester of last year, 2019, 2020? Is that what I hear?
Yeah, that sounds good.
I'm having a hard time opening up the links. Is anybody else?
There are Excel spreadsheets. Do you have that on your computer, Amy?
Shit on this one. Anyway, well, thanks.
I can always send them to you as a PDF, too.
Okay, so.
Can you zoom that a little bit so it's a little bigger? Down in the lower right-hand corner, you can push that little plus next to the hundred percent. No way over, sorry. Wrong plus.
Even further over, all the way to the right.
All the way over to the right.
Yeah, how do I undo what I just did?
Just click back on the first tab. See where it says extract? Yep, there you go.
All right.
Anne and her Excel spreadsheets, I tell you.
Perfect. How's that?
It's great. And just drag your bar over to the left a little bit so you can see, but. There you go.
There we go. All right, so I'm going to tee up some of this, and obviously Beth Lambert will be able to jump in as well. It's in, on the left-hand side, you'll see what department the class falls into, the course number. We do have a slide there for the course name, and then there'll be a section number of that, and then the term of when it starts, when it ends, so that way you'll know if it's a quarter class or a semester class, or a year-long class, and what block it is, what their roster is for the number of students that are in that particular, that were, considering we're back in 2019, 2020. And then also what the maximum students are in that class. And so we'll start up here at the beginning, and I can kind of just come back. Beth Lambert, do you want to talk a little bit about, because we start talking about some of the applied and some of the AP, there might be some context that's needed.
Sure. So first, I want to give a big shout out to Anne Lura, who spent the last day and a half pulling this together for you guys. I'm not quite sure what we would do without that data specialist, so I told her I would give her a shout out tonight and a big thank you. So what you have in, I don't even know how to go about telling or explaining to you about this. So you have to understand that when the master schedule is created, it's created based on student requests. So as we get ready to start registering kids for classes for next year, what they sign up for and say, yes, this is what I want to take or I need to take, that is the data that is used to create this master schedule. Then from there, it changes with ad drop, it changes with, maybe there's a course we were going to run, but there's not enough numbers, so we don't run it that year because there's higher numbers in another class that we need to, that we need to address. If you want a more in-depth, I think you definitely need to have Beth Letourneau at some point come and present to you as she is the master of all things master schedule. But I can give you enough information, I think, to help you understand this. So if you look at column C, that's where you have the course names. So where it says AP, that's an advanced placement class. This is the second year that we've had our AP art class. And if you go across, you'll notice that there's only one section of it. It only ran for quarter one and quarter two, and that was because we only had five kids. So we do have a few AP classes where they should normally run a full year. We only run them for one semester because the numbers are so low. So AP art, environmental science, and I believe there is a section of AP government this year that is running a semester because the numbers were low and the teacher was needed to fulfill other course requirements for graduation. And so then what a lot of the kids will do is they will turn that, the second semester, into an independent study and continue to work with the teacher, just not in a full-class setting. So I just want to explain that to you. So we do make adjustments with AP as needed. And then you move down to applied art. You will notice that the applied art, that's the fundamentals class, and that's the class that everybody needs if they want to do anything else art-related. And the reason that that's a requirement is because if you look at the art department in the middle school, by no fault of their own with only one teacher, the students don't get art at all during seventh grade year, and it's very limited the other years. So they don't come in with all of the knowledge they need to go right into drawing or right into ceramics. So we have to fill in that gap with art fundamentals. So that is usually a very high, very popular class because everybody, it's one of the graduation requirements. And it used to only have a maximum of sixteen students, but we have up to twenty-four. They were able to add more tables to the space with the new high school. The rooms are a little bit bigger, so we're able to accommodate more students. So you'll notice that in column H, where it says roster, that's how many kids were actually in the class for that semester. And then column I is that's the maximum amount that could have been there. And so as you go down, then you have ceramics, you'll see that there were ten kids, eleven kids, fourteen kids, and you can just kind of go down through. Drawing, the numbers get smaller. We had theater. And so that's kind of how this, when you're looking at this document, that's kind of how it works. And so that's kind of how this, when you're looking at this document, that's kind of how it works. Are there any questions about that? Okay, so then we slide down, and this is where we get into English, so we have AP English. I believe we have Lit and Lang, it's cut off a little bit. Our English department also teaches AP Research and AP Seminar. So then again, if you go over, you'll notice what quarter. They all started in quarter one, ended in quarter four, so those ran the entire length of the school year because the numbers were high enough to warrant it. And you can see the total numbers. Then we go down to Applied English. I'm thinking this is Applied English nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. So we have three different levels of, of core courses at the high school. We have Applied, we have College and Career Prep, and we have Honors Level. And each one is geared towards a different level of student and their needs. Applied tend to be the students that their learning takes a little bit longer, they need more time. They need more time to process, to learn, to master certain skills and knowledge. So that's what the Applied level, College and Career Prep. That's the track that if you want to go to college, that will give you everything that you need, and then our Honors Level, those are for the kids. A lot of those tend to go to AP classes. And so you'll notice that for our Applied classes, we max out at eighteen. And that is because the ratio, those students need so much, so much extra attention and time to learn and process, we try to keep the numbers down. And then as you go up to CP, it goes up, I believe they jumped it up to twenty-four as well as honors. If you see anything in here that has AS in front of it, that's alt-school. I can tell you though that alt-school this year, there are three teachers with twenty-one kids that they rotate through those three teachers. And then this, this year I believe they had twenty-seven. So it was like a one to nine ratio, student, teacher. So then you can see the numbers for our CP, CP courses and our Honors English courses. And then it continues on into Intro to Applied. This is some of our, I can't even think what those are. I think they're electives. And then you get into Personal Finance, and then we move on into French and Spanish. And then down into Health, and it just goes alphabetically. So when you're looking at this data, that's what you're looking at. And you might see, let's say you might see a math class, it's the same class, but it's being taught three different times, and the number might be twenty-eight in one class, sixteen in another, twenty-one in the third, and your first question might be, why didn't they even those out, those numbers are so uneven? And they do as much as they can, but sometimes switching that one class for a student to bring the number down blows up their entire schedule, and so they can't, and it's restricted. Every teacher's experienced it, I've had huge classes of nearly thirty, smaller classes of fifteen at the same, so it evens out. So you might have more in one, a little less in the next block, and it kind of evens out a little bit. And it's just how the schedule works, it's not, it's not as easy to fix and manipulate sometimes. And so that's why you might get some of those uneven numbers.
And when, and when you try to build a schedule, you try to run so many of those different combinations to see how many can, how can we set up a schedule that allows those people, that accommodates what people signed up for? How we can meet those requests? And a lot of it is trying to be able to run that, that's something that programs can be able to do that. Obviously Beth Letourneau could talk more about that. But that's where you kind of take the request, then you put it in to try to see, how can we build a schedule that allows the most people to get what they look for? It's not always perfect, but you run those different options so that, and that's where Beth was talking about, where some of those class sizes may vary, and you may say that, why don't you just level those out? Well, that's because we have to offer them at certain times to be able to help balance the requests that other people have in the schedule.
Yep, thank you.
Beth, can I, I need to go back a step, I had a really well-articulated question, but I was muted, so. So I'll, I'll just wing it like I normally do. Back to the art fundamentals in ninth grade?
Correct.
It seems like you said, that's because there's only one art teacher at the middle school.
That is correct.
So why don't we move the art fundamentals teacher to the middle school and then solve more art middle school, and then they can jump into the classes they'd like to take in ninth grade? Now, that's a really simple question.
One of the requests that you'll see, right, from added positions that are not in this year's budget, but for next year's budget, there is an allied arts teacher request from the middle school. And so that one would help in terms of giving more opportunities to help balance the schedule. And as Beth has talked about, it also gives people more of a background in art so that when they're coming into the high school, there, there's also gonna be probably situations where they're better prepared.
Yep. I just, you know, this is coming from a guy that struggles with connect the dots, so I, I, I just, I believe in the arts, I'd just love to give more kids an opportunity there.
Yeah, well, actually, I'll tag on to that a little bit from personal experience. Like I know of several kids, my daughter, one of them, and some friends of hers, wanted to take like digital photography their senior year, but they hadn't taken the applied arts class, the fundamental, art fundamental, rather. So they couldn't take that. And of course, you know, if they fit, they only had one sched, one block to fit this class in, so they could have taken art fundamentals, but then they wouldn't have had any room for digital photography. So, you know, I kind of agree with Jonathan, actually, I just, I sent Beth a separate email rather than get into it right now. But you know, could you shift those resources to the middle school? Give everybody that art fundamental experience, and when they come into the high school, not have that as a requirement?
So then you, you're saying move one of the potentially art teachers at the high school down to the middle school?
Yeah, I didn't know if that's, if that would make that happen or not, so. So I just figured it was a bigger discussion, so I didn't really want to get into it.
Right, fair enough.
Yeah, I think, and, and Dawn, you mentioned it through the own personal experience that you've had, is one of the big challenges with scheduling is there has to some come, come down to be choices sometimes, right? There's just ways that it's gonna be limited blocks, limited offerings, and then you start talking about prerequisites and the things that have to happen. That in itself is sometimes where you see that, you know, sometimes people want a particular schedule, but through our best efforts, it's just not gonna fit, so there have to be some choices unfortunately made, where there's classes that people would like to have, and they can't either fit it in their schedule, or it's a major conflict with something else they're interested in.
Yep.
But in that case, I have no idea what the answer is, but in that case, would, let's just say your, your daughter, for instance, would she have been able to be given an opportunity to take that at YCCC?
Oh, potentially, yeah.
While she was in high school?
Yeah, well, that's where you end up with if you're trying to fit in some other stuff. You have a number of kids that'll take a history class at YCCC, or, you know, a language outside, you know, just because they can't fit it in, because they want to, you know, you want to take AP courses, you want to have electives, you want to band or chorus, or, so. I just like to minimize that for the kids, I think if we're gonna have well-rounded students, we're gonna try to eliminate those conflicts as much as we can.
Okay, so Beth, thank you, that's a nice job to be able to help with that.
Actually, the one, the other thing I noticed when I was looking through it real quick, a number of the things will pop up, and I know band and chorus are big like this. Like you'll have a red and white day one, you'll have a half semester, you'll have every other day off of whatever. They've done some really creative stuff to try to at least get kids in a couple days a week.
They have, yes.
For, you know, the other members that may not be aware of that, like Paula and Amy especially.
Yes, they've been very open and creative in any way they can to get their students to be able to, to join their class, even if it's every other day for a semester, or every day for a year. Yeah, the, the band, Jane and Erica have been, have been really good about them.
So this actually would have been when they were still under the five-block schedule, right? But no, these aren't the classes that were actually offered though, right? This is just what people were interested in?
No, this is, this is the actual schedule.
This is the actual schedule last year.
Okay. And yes, it was still under a five-block run at that point. I do believe Anne, so like I said, anything with an AS in front of it is alt-school. Anything with a BR is bridge. Anne left it all in there, she figured she'd just do it and give you guys all of the information as well. So, and there's also special ed classes and resource rooms in here, so you have the whole picture of the entire school to look at.
And I think Beth, when it comes to something like an alt-school where you look at it, and it may be a smaller number to begin with, but it may be a small number, but that's because they, they also teach multiple courses, I guess, within one block?
Yes, thank you, you wanted me to mention that. So if you look under alt-school like English, you'll notice she might have English one and only have one student. But if you look in that same block of time, then she'll have alt-school English two, and she might have three students, alt-school English three, she teaches multiple levels of English, depending upon the kids that she has in there. So you have to actually look at the, the blocks into column G to see that she's probably got four different classes running at that same block. So it's not one, it's probably seven or eight that she's teaching at that point together.
Yeah, so I think the example I have up here, if you look at 570, and you look at, yeah, 570, and the, the period that that's offered, you're gonna see, or with that, you can see that some of these are probably combined.
So that actually answers a question I had under special ed stuff. Because it's kind of the same way there, when you see some really little numbers, they're in like the same block in the same room and everything, so.
So that would be probably resource room, and they have some kids that have resource room every day, some kids just on red days, some kids just on white days. So that's Anne put that all in there as well, so you can see that it does fluctuate day to day.
So that's the first semester of last year, do you want to continue to look at the, bring up the other ones? Or does that give you enough background information? Sorry, we didn't get that out sooner, as Beth mentioned, a big thank you to Anne for helping put this together for us. Be able to...
Yeah, maybe, maybe, Matt, this may be for you, so when I was looking, Bridge, max being twenty, but you see ones, twos, threes, fours, you don't need to scroll back, it's really more of a bridge question. I mean, there are only maybe fourteen to sixteen students in that program currently? Is the max?
No, it's higher than that, but yeah.
Is it?
Yep, yep.
Somebody said just the other night that it was down, but maybe it's just...
It was down, and we've been monitoring that, and there's been some intakes as we've started in January to help increase that up, so. And there's more intakes, I think, scheduled when I had talked to Stacy last week. But remember on Monday, as part of our presentation, workshop on Monday, Stacy will be there to talk about, give you an overview, overview of the special education budget, and she can also be able to give you real-time numbers.
I had a question kind of along the same lines with that, that max number of students in any one of the classes? Like, you know, who feeds into that? Is that sure with the department head, with Peterman? You know, what, what are the factors for that?
Um, I think some of it comes down to space. You, you get more than twenty-five, twenty-six, although we did up the English classes, you'll notice, I don't know if it was this particular year or this current year, English courses went up to twenty-eight. I think it was this year they had to up their numbers in order to fit all the kids. I think, I don't know who makes the decisions, I know it's been a discussion in the department chair meetings about, you know, class sizes and, and to, to make sure that everybody has the the right amount of support for them. But where the actual numbers came from, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Gotcha.
Sorry. They've always been those numbers for, they've been those numbers for twenty years, so I don't know.
You're just gonna tell us how it is, so.
Yeah, I will be honest with you.
Do you know if the, I mean, is there a state mandate of how many kids can be in a certain class size for high school? And I guess I'm asking more for like the seniors.
Uh, I don't think there is, I would, what I'm thinking of is referring back to the to the 279, right? Cheryl, when we get a, you get like a student-to-teacher ratio at that particular level where they would give you the funding, remember they're setting that as the floor with that. Doesn't mean that you can't go beyond that and increase that. But I don't think there's like a special Department of Education set rule on what those class sizes have to be, because there's so many... Yeah, I think there's a lot of factors and things that go into that as well.
Yeah, for the high school, it's sixteen to one for staffing.
And I think some of that, I think they realize that you're gonna have a course of studies that at the end of the day is sometimes not just a core required class, but it could be some of these other more upper-level courses. It also could have something to do with, same thing for SRTC, as they, most of those programs are capped at sixteen. And a lot of it for that, it comes down to, for the most part, I think, is safety-driven, due to the nature of the program and the supervision that's needed.
So Matt, and maybe Beth, one of the earlier comments I think Beth made was the master schedule is based on student requests. So where does that come into this whole conversation?
Well, I mean, there's certain things that students don't really have a say over. There are those minimum graduation requirements they need for a Stanford diploma for math, English, science, social studies, performing arts, it's, it's the elective. So what we've done the past couple of years, three years, since Beth Letourneau's been at the head of it, teachers have been, but they can put into IC now what each kid should be taking for their next class next year. Because they, they've had them, they know what, what the next fit will work best for them, for them to be successful and to continue learning. So they actually even take that out of the choice of the kids. Parents can always say, I don't agree with that level, and they can have a conversation with their counselor if they don't agree with what the teacher has recommended. But really, the kids are just looking at choosing their electives, for the most part, at this point, so.
So I think Jonathan, to also get to what you were talking about is one of the things that, that's why you see, hey, why does the high school need to work on next year's Course of Studies booklet to get that finalized maybe so early? And why are we talking about changes to next year's schedules? Because it is a process where those requests are gonna be going out soon, so people can start looking ahead to what they're gonna sign up for next year. Now, that being said, I think one of the, one of the things that was mentioned at the last workshop on Monday was really taking a hard look at the high school to see if there are any things, if we're talking about being in a budget situation where there need to be cuts, or where we need to, and we're at a point now where the only meaningful things that we can do around personnel and around positions. And so I think if you're looking at the high school, that's where some of it gets challenging, Jonathan. That being said, having some conversations with Matt Peterman as a principal, you can kind of look back on and look at this year's, last year's, and see where some of those trends are going. And that, there might be some recommendations for some cuts that would probably, something that would maybe be coming on Monday at our next workshop. So when you look at those, it's gonna, I think the takeaway though is, it's not like it's just sitting here, and any cut you make isn't gonna have some sort of impact. It's gonna be felt somewhere along the schedule, somewhere for students with that. But I don't think any of us realize that any of the cuts that we have, they're all gonna have some sort of impact somewhere with that. So I think that's kind of getting at what you're, I, I think, what you're looking at as far as the timeline. They'll know, and that's why when Matt Peterman says, you know, we could really maybe reallocate some positions, he's really looking for that art position, right? Another art teacher would really free up the schedule to really help with those fundamentals of arts so that they can meet those requests that students have. Do we want to look at, do we want to look at?
Matt, I just wanted to say, I think along those lines, that's where another, another tack to that is, okay, that requirement to take art fundamentals, to take any other elective is what's creating that bottleneck. And that's a requirement that we've put in place ourselves, you know? So I think that's another direction to look at that.
Yeah, as far as maybe that, what the prerequisite is and how that could be actually a barrier, uh, to it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I, Dawn, I agree with that thought. That's good.
I mean, I see where the, the, the thought behind it is you want a kid to understand the fundamentals of any art, like even doing photography. You've kind of got to understand light and contrast and all that. Um, you know, but can you, you know, they get some of that at the junior high. You know, if you added some resources at the junior high, could they get all of it that they need? So that's, you know, I'm not an art expert, so it's not me to make that decision. I'm just pointing out that that would be another avenue to explore. I don't want to be misinterpreted if there's any art teachers out there. I don't want them to like come graffiti my garage. Well, it'd look nice at least, so maybe they can.
And, 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 yeah, and at, at the end, I think as we try to get numbers, there's always some context behind them. And that's something that we're trying to be able to present here because, you know, there's, there's nuance and there's things that have to be looked at in, in terms of that, that I don't think it's being set up in a lot of ways just to say, hey, let's really make it problematic for kids, or really let's make it a problem for the schedule, uh, for that. So I think we do have to be careful with some of those, um, uh, that we're not jumping to any conclusions or, or assumptions. Okay, do we want to look at that's first semester of last year? Do we want to bring up any of the other ones, or do people feel like they're positioned to better dig into that a little bit more? Uh, what I'm anticipating with this is as you start to look at that, there may be some questions or some things that come up that we do have to get that further context for and look into. Um, with that, I think that would be something that would be helpful as we start to look at these numbers. But that's kind of why when you see, um, the projections we showed you on Monday, you're not going to see so much the student to teacher ratios unlike what you're seeing in the elementary school, for example.
Yeah, and the only thing I was going to bring up was I haven't had time to really dive into it, but I'm going to assume the, the ones from this year, we've had those kids that have gone, um, you know, they've gotten pulled out for homeschooling, so they'd be out of that number. Um, how about the remote learners? Are they figured into, because they wouldn't have signed up for classes, right, if they were doing, um, I can't remember what the high school level remote stuff was.
You mean for this, this year, Dawn?
Yeah, this year, because the numbers, because we had another two spreadsheets from this year. I got to assume there's going to be some differences from the year before because of all that.
No, because the fully remote kids at the high school are fully remoting into their classrooms.
Oh, yeah, you're right. It's just K through eight that we're doing the, uh.
The platforms, correct.
Okay.
Oh, I think, Dawn, Dawn, I just think that what we've all been kind of kicking around a little bit for a while and is, and Beth, one of the comments you made, and I, and I, maybe you didn't mean to make it, but I happen to agree with it, is some of this stuff might be 20 years old. And it's a good time to kind of look at it in, with a fresher look and see what, what could we do today for the students that maybe they're more interested in, in, in the times that we're living in instead of what may have been created long ago. It was a long-winded editorial, but we need to take a fresh look at what we're doing.
I would agree with that completely.
I, the silence made me think, am I on mute again? No, sorry.
Everybody pretend like you can't hear Jonathan anytime he talks, just so we can miss.
Sorry, I've left the room twice. I made coffee. I'm good. It's okay. You guys carry on.
Yeah, Jonathan, I know what you mean. When you're in those Zoom meetings, you start talking and it's met with just silence with that.
I get it all the time.
Yeah, so do I. So, yeah, I, I, um, uh, with it, so. Uh, yeah, so what I have in front of you now is second semester right now, um, which just kicked off this week at the high school. So, um, Dawn, you asked your question about how it's being done with, uh, remember those students who are, um, full remote, uh, at the high school, they're still part, the, the way it's set up, they're synchronous and still working with their teachers. So they're still part of these numbers with them. The ones that wouldn't be would be kids who have pulled out to be homeschooled, uh, completely.
I was just going to, I was going to ask why there was a period five under AP art, but that's an independent study, so. Now, these, do these, these don't have the text that are, uh, numbers in here, right?
I did not ask her to pull them, but she can do that if you want.
I think she's probably done more than enough. That's more off the top of my head.
Sorry, I had to leave. Um, I just got, maybe you heard it come over the Zoom as well. My tacos are ready for supper, so, um, I had to make sure I let someone know that, uh, they need to be quiet, so.
Be right over.
Yeah.
I hope you made enough, Matt.
Yeah, exactly. So, okay, uh, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Probably the earliest he's eaten in a long time.
Exactly. This isn't going to be something that's going in the microwave, so, and it smells pretty good, but that's okay.
Good luck. I had a warm meal.
Yeah, well, it's, it's usually microwave, uh, hit the instant minute there, so, okay, um. Yeah, so here's, we wanted to at least get, uh, this was a, coming from our conversation on Monday, uh, as we can be able to look at that. I think, um, when we look ahead to our budget workshop next Monday, we do have Stacy Bissell coming in. But I also anticipate having some recommendations coming forward possibly about, uh, maybe some changes to the high school budget. Um, I started those conversations with, uh, Principal Matt Peterman, uh, as we look at that. So there may be some options coming forward on Monday. Um, wasn't that we weren't going to be ready to, well, we weren't ready today, but it wasn't because of some other pieces. We need some more time to look at that. So in the meantime, we thought it would be important to get this, uh, these numbers to you and at least some context and some process behind it.
That sounds good. I think it's good information.
Okay, uh, any other questions out of this or any other information that people are looking for or have in terms of, um, thoughts or, uh, other feedback to help guide us?
Well, I don't have anything, Matt. It, it's, it's a bit overwhelming really to digest in, in 10 minutes or less, so. Sure, I have questions. I just can't formulate them right now.
Yeah, and, and that, and good point, Jonathan, because, uh, what people can do, uh, with this is if there's time that you've had a little bit more to dig into this deeper, or you give it some more thought, and there's some questions or ideas that come up, please send those to me so that we can be able to help guide that to make our, uh, make the workshop as uh, informative and as, uh, helpful as possible. Uh, so if there are some, and we realize that we throw things at you and it's, it's overwhelming and it's hard to digest, that's not being done intentionally. It's just the nature of the information that we have for that.
A screenshot right now says independent study AP or something. Max of one, but you got two in it. That's, that's good efficiency.
Well, but you also have to remember that that teacher is also teaching a, an art class at the time. So this is, they took, they took AP art semester one or whatever, and then the next time it's an independent study. So the teacher's working with two students while they're teaching the class at the same time, so.
I, I don't know what I'm talking about. Thanks for the help.
You're welcome. And I do want to clarify when I said that, that some of this seemed like it's been around since I started teaching. I can tell you that as we've gone through the years, the process and the, and what we've, what we are now teaching is different from what I taught back when I started 20 years ago as an English teacher. So we have evolved and it has grown so that we are doing more, um, m- more teaching on skills, the reading skills for, um, for texts that aren't necessarily literature, novels, but it's more of those real life texts and, and so I don't want you to think that we're stuck 20 years ago. I, I feel bad that I made that comment.
Nope.
Things have evolved. Can things always change and improve? Absolutely, but we have, we have evolved a little bit.
No, look, be tr- 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 b- b- believe me, I, I, I knew you might be, uh, not offended, but concerned that I was using your, I was not stealing your thunder or your, your, your verbiage. I, I was thinking that anyway. And I, yeah, no, no, don't take that the wrong way, Beth.
Yeah, and I think, uh, one thing I remember years ago, when I came to Sanford, it looked like the offerings, Beth, especially the English department were like, there were just a ton. And I think we did in terms of trying to streamline some things, did try to bring that more into uh, an actual English one, English two, English three, English four concept as opposed to some of the individual ones that you might have had where there were some small class sizes there.
Right, and we, we have tried to rearrange them, especially in English, so that narrative writing takes place a little bit later on as you're getting ready to write your college essay. I mean, that's a story, telling a story about yourself. So we tried to place the different standards we're teaching, um, appropriately so that it fit the needs of what the students were going through at the time. Um, so.
I think it's funny that alt school English is in Roman numerals, French and Spanish are in one, two, and threes. Sorry, I, I, it's the little things that amuse me.
Uh, okay, well, we do have the, uh, the 5:30 deadline and Matt's tacos are ready. So, uh, Paula, do you have anything you want to chime in at the end?
No, I actually, um, my questions regarding these schedules have, are moved towards the four block, five block topics, so I, I don't want to bring them up right now.
Yeah, that's, that's another whole, uh, another rabbit hole to die down.
Right.
We'll go there soon enough, so.
I'll have lots of questions then.
Anything else from you, Amy?
No, I, I'm one that, like, I need to have them like on two computers to like side by side the numbers and it's, um, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I've been trying to do too the whole time.
Because I can't, it won't, I, yeah, it's fine. I'll figure it out. I, I guess I, I just, you know, um, kind of the similar question that I had asked, um, when, um, Kathy Sargent was on is, you know, having, is there a reason why some students just don't go from one to two? Is it, you know, and what those numbers are kind of looking like, you know, um?
What do you mean by one to two?
Like, let's just say, did you, did they end up not wanting to go to art two because they just, art wasn't for them? Or, you know, or other types of classes? Is it just because they, they're choosing, they're like, eh, like, and I wonder if there's ever any feedback of why they don't, like, do the students say, oh, you know what, art, I'm just realizing art's not for me and I'm going to try something else? Or is there any other reasons why kids don't continue in certain classes?
Well, they need a fine arts requi- re- requirement to graduate. So if you don't want to learn guitar or piano, or you're not already in band and you don't want to sing, it leaves art. So that, you know, if art fundamentals is the stepping stone to every other art program, that might be the only art you take. But if it's opened up so that maybe, hey, I can take ceramics instead of art, one, sweet, I'd rather take ceramics. But there's basic information they need to know in order to be able to do those other higher classes. So I think that might be some of the reason why.
I wasn't even really meaning art. I'm meaning it like in all of them. That's where I want to compare, like.
Oh, yes, yep.
Yeah, so I think like if, looking at it, like, maybe I take Spanish one, but I don't go to Spanish two. How, why is that? Or maybe I'm in a tech program and I take the first year program, but I could, I choose not to go on. And so trying to get some handles on those reasons, we understand that people's circumstances and interests and things change. But we also want to make sure of what those challenges are and issues, and are they things that we can control a little bit better to help with that? That's, that's how I look at that.
Yeah, that was my intent.
Well, excellent. Well, then I think, uh, it's just about 5:30, so let's wrap it up. That, uh, Sarah can get ready for the, I think it's a planning board meeting that she's going to jump to next. And then we will, uh, we'll meet again on Monday.
Thank you all.
Want to do a motion, do you want to do a motion to adjourn?
John, you want to make the motion to adjourn, John?
I've never seen one fail. Sure, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Paula, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Amy?
I vote yes.
Uh, Jonathan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So now we are officially adjourned.